Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Shosso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrop.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for our March 19th, 2019 council meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the minutes of the March 19th meeting were included in your meeting packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody read and reviewed the minutes? Are there any corrections or comments?
They look good.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve the minutes from our March 19th regular city council meeting.
A resolution by Allison Howe, second by Lisa Northrop, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a reading of a proclamation declaring April to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the city of Fort Morgan. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before age 18. Whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what we can be, or what can be done, to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors through annual local and national awareness events such as Wear Teal Day of Action on April 2nd and Denim Day on April 24th. And whereas, staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in Fort Morgan encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, your voice has power. And whereas, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in the city of Fort Morgan through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas, the city of Fort Morgan strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversation about sexual violence is how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our community can take action to create change for the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fort Morgan joins Sarah Inc., Anti-Sexual Violence Advocates and Support Services Programs in the belief that all community members be part of the solution and end sexual violence, along with the United States Government and the State of Colorado. I, Ronald Schaver, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you a lot for your support and anything you can do to help us spread the word about this terrible crime. I think the more we talk about it, the less likely it's going to happen. So join us in wearing denim on the 24th. We also have a training on human trafficking coming up on the 25th. We are trying to put together a task force for our district in our response to human trafficking. And also on the 18th, we're going to have a get-together at Cable's, so come and join us for refreshments there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a proclamation declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, while children are our most precious resource, they are also the most vulnerable. Whereas children have a right to thrive, learn, and grow to their full potential. And whereas the prevention of child abuse and neglect strengthens Colorado families and communities and ensures the opportunity for children to develop in healthy, trusting families, schools, and neighborhoods where that consequently builds a foundation of our society. And whereas the city of Fort Morgan is currently implementing initiatives for improving the safety and well-being of children and families across Colorado. And whereas, we must come together as partners to keep children safe, ensure that the voices of our children are heard by all, and extend a helping hand to children. And whereas each of us plays a role in the prevention of child abuse and neglect, we encourage anyone concerned about the safety and well-being to report to 1-844-CO4-KIDS. Whereas, I call upon Fort Morgan community members to provide safe, stable, and nurturing relationships and environments for our children. Free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Colorado's children will grow to their fullest potential as a next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this community, state, and nation. Now therefore, I, Ronald Schaver, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, do by here proclaim April 2019 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Fort Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Suzanne Brown from the Morgan County Department of Human Services. I am the intake supervisor who supervises the intake workers that go out and do the investigations for abuse and neglect. I'd just like to thank the city of Fort Morgan and the police officers who often assist us when we're out and doing our investigations. So thank you again.
Well, thank you for what you do. Next is another proclamation on National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of our American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's elected leaders are increasingly turning to national services and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorp and Senior Corp participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities. They educate students for 21st century jobs, fight the opioid epidemic, respond to natural disasters, and support veterans and military families. And whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership ability for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Services represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen communities' impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service and a commitment that remains with them for the future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services share a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country with National Service Recognition Day on April 2nd, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Ronald Schaver, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our community and to thank those who serve and ways to find to give back to their communities.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Chatwood. I'm one of the AmeriCorp vistas actually serving here in Fort Morgan along with kids at their best. I'm in my third term of service with AmeriCorp Vista, and I personally have been working towards working on a college and career program with kids at their best in AmeriCorp Vista this year. It's a great honor and a privilege to be here in front of you today representing the AmeriCorp vistas here in Morgan County. And we want to thank Fort Morgan for their continued support of our program, and hopefully we can come back and keep bringing service to your area. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is presentations by applicants for Ward 1 city council vacancy and council questions. At this point, we have three candidates who have applied for the Ward 1 vacancy, and we will give each of you three to five minutes' time to address council and for council to ask questions of any of the three applicants.
Your Honor, if you'd like, I could briefly outline the process we're going to follow, and we drew names for the order they're going to speak and so on.
I will give you the floor.
Okay. So we do have three applicants. We're filling a vacancy, so this term will be just till the successor is sworn in, who is elected in November. So it will be until next January. The person who is chosen obviously can run in the November election. They would have to go through that process. So what I have is, we drew names, and so we're going to have, the order will be Tesla Mann, then Susanna Guardado, and then David Fowler. And they'll each have five minutes to kind of tell us about themselves, their reasons to want to be on the city council, and answer your questions. Then anybody from the public will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes in support of whatever applicant they favor. And then we will go to the balloting. And the first ballot has all three names, and you will vote for two. In other words, it's like a primary. It's going to eliminate one of the people. The second ballot will have two names, and you'll vote for your choice of those two people to be the next council member. If, since we have six people voting, there's a possibility of a tie. If that happens, we have a third ballot that will have those same two names on it, where you'll rank each of those two candidates on a scale of 1 to 10. And the one with the highest point total will be named the council member. And if that ends in a tie, we still have the hat and the names, and that is how we will choose the council member.
What if that ends in a tie?
What's that?
What if that ends in a tie?
You're going to have to explain to me how that...
Then we wait till November.
Then we do a cage match.
Then seven and a half wins.
Okay. Ms. Mann?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you? My name's Tess Mann. I'm a downtown business owner. Prior to opening Tangles, I was the sole proprietor for 20 years at Downtown Hair. I've been in this industry for 20 years and a Fort Morgan resident for 22. My husband Ray is a Fort Morgan native and is the SCADA AMI lead for Morgan County REA. And we have five kids and seven grandkids. I've been coming to council meetings for several months now, and my ideas for downtown development and housing fit well with the ideas I've been hearing at the council meetings so far. I'm interested in helping with the field house and street department projects. I believe in a strong work ethic and teamwork. I'm currently working on a downtown business association along with other business owners. I'm putting together a mural project with other local artists that should be a lot of fun for us and the community. My husband recently gave me a book by Patrick Lencioni. In it, it says, "If you could get all the people in an organization rowing in the same direction, you could dominate any industry in any market against any competition at any time." We live in an amazing little town, and I love it here, and it would be an honor to serve with you on the council. Thanks.
That was a quick three minutes. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Mann? So your business would allow you to attend council meetings in...
Absolutely.
Time?
Yep.
I have a quick question for John before you. Do we have to ask the same type of question to each of the applicants to make it fair, or can we ask kind of fair game on questions?
Yeah, whatever comes out of their presentation, I think is fine.
Thanks. But you answered my question in your speech, so.
Good.
Thanks. Susanna?
Hello. So my name is Susanna Guardado. Guardado being if you want to replace the G-U with a W, so W-A-R-D-A-D-O. That makes it simpler for most people. So Guardado, if you all want to repeat that after me. So how I got to be here in Fort Morgan, I was born in Mexico to two U.S.-born parents. My father was born in Lansing, Michigan, and my mother was born in Los Angeles. My father, being the romantic he is, he had dreams of publishing a book here in the States while he was living in Mexico. So he found out about an opportunity here, living in Fort Morgan, through Cargill Base Employment, and then it was Excel. So he planned on working a year, saving enough to publish his book deal. That didn't happen. He brought us over after a year, and I have been a resident of Fort Morgan 21 years. Right now, I am the executive director of One Morgan County. We are a community-building organization. I have had the pleasure of working with a lot of you. What really drove me to this vacancy, I had always had the dream of running for public office, whatever scope that meant, really at the local level, really not looking at national rhetoric. So once I seen this position open, I applied, living in Ward 1 for more than a year. I had been living at 217 West Street with my father. And then afterwards, I moved in with a couple of room ments at 419 West Beaver. What really, so again, wanting to do this, and what drove me was the situation at Kaewa Apartments. So there was a fire recently. My organization kind of took charge of what I would call just like, I don't know if I would say manipulation, but just taking charge of the situation. We had a fire at Kaewa Apartments, which is across the street from Calvary University. Calvary was kind enough to kind of take folks in till we did an initial intake. It was really hard on us, myself and other organizational partners. Again, me being with One Morgan County, kind of seeing that need for housing as one of my issue points on my application. But outside of that, we had a lot of folks wanting to kind of move outside of that. There really wasn't anything available, so I know housing is a big issue for all of us, particularly for this population who are calling Fort Morgan home. Sorry, I have an outline. So with that, like, I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of you. I've had the pleasure of working with Clint on high school students who are newcomers, Ron Schaver with the IFtar celebration, and Ally Howe as well, Doug Shosso with Coffee with a Cop. And I know a lot of our students are interested in being policemen here in town. And it's really just giving back. So us being accepted into the community, myself being an immigrant, and everyone else. Again, just giving back. Ally with Morgan Strong and with the IFtar celebration. Robin, I know I've heard a lot of you through, sorry, Lisa.
It's okay.
Through Robin.
Happens all the time.
Yeah. What I've been able to do at One Morgan County is just kind of establish some kind of like common front. We know that we all share common values. So at our community center that is based off of Main Street, 218 Main Street to be exact, we have this conversation wall where we ask, well, what's the best thing about living Fort Morgan? And we hear the diversity, the safety, and all of that really like common values, and we want to kind of amplify that as an organization. I know you all feel the same way. Yeah, since the time I've been at One Morgan County, I have been able to elevate our budget from $70,000 to $220,000 through kind of incorporating different partners into our area. So partners that I have been able to bring in are Colorado Health Foundation, Colorado Latino Foundation as well. We were initially started as a branch of the Colorado Trust, and we've been able kind of to rein in and really amplify the efforts that the resident team is doing. So yeah, I have a lot of experience collaborating with different stakeholders, different organizations, all of that. Again, like Clint through working through the high school, Ron through attending the IFtar celebration, Ron, I mean Doug, through attending the IFtar celebration, and also the just kind of community Coffee with a Cop, sorry, celebration. So we know we have a lot of students who are newcomers who are interested in being a police officer. And then Ally Howe with the Morgan Strong effort. That's it.
So same question for me. Does your, will your job allow you to spend the time necessary for this?
Yeah, most definitely. I have blocked off Tuesdays and Thursdays in my schedule.
Mostly Tuesdays?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions versus that?
I don't think so.
You were a joy to deal with.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Good evening. I feel like the new kid in town. I'd like to thank Your Honor, the Mayor, members of city council for the opportunity to present my qualifications for the open council position. I believe this is a great opportunity for me to contribute to my adopted city and to the citizens of Ward 1. Please allow me a brief history. I moved to Fort Morgan six and a half years ago. Once again, the new kid in town. Before, when I was offered a position with La Prino. Before accepting that offer, my wife Debbie and I came out to Fort Morgan for the weekend to get the lay of the land. We drove through virtually every street in the city. I don't think we stopped driving for 48 hours. We decided that finishing our careers and retiring to a small town would be a great fit, and I believe we really did make the right decision. Why do I want to be a city council member? It's a good question. All my adult life, I've wanted to be involved in local government. After moving to Fort Morgan, I volunteered for the Fort Morgan Golf Advisory Committee. It was a fun and interesting way to dip my toes into the local government arena. After, about two years ago, I answered a call for volunteers for the Strictly for Streets Tax Committee. Not necessarily a popular one, but it did pass. I answered that call because as a citizen of Fort Morgan, I believed that the streets were in dire need of attention. It was a wonderful experience. It gave me a taste of what involvement in local government could be. Since then, I've been looking for other involvement. I received a call asking if I would help fill out the last two months of a planning commissioner's term when he wasn't able to. I jumped at the chance. I found that experience interesting and enlightening. I'm also a volunteer within the community. I co-chair the La Prino Foundation that provides money in the form of gifts and grants to deserving groups in and around Fort Morgan. Among those are the Converged Day Treatment Program, One Morgan County Growing Readers Program, local schools, and many others. What are my biggest concerns for the city of Fort Morgan? City growth. As I stated in my application, the city must grow to be able to survive. However, unchecked growth like in other cities must not happen. I don't, I don't think that the zero growth like cities in Boulder are necessarily a good idea either, just the opposite. Growth must happen. It must be logical and well thought out. Most importantly, growth must be of the greatest benefit to those who are served by government. If the people of Fort Morgan are passionate about a growth issue, their voices must be heard. Number two, revitalization of Main Street. When we moved here, Main Street had more businesses than it does now. Pennies is gone, The Times is downside, and several others have closed. I understand that small businesses fail nearly as often as they succeed. Starting and running a small business is a very difficult and demands total commitment, even though some just don't make it. While I have much to learn about the hurdles that one must overcome starting a new business in Fort Morgan, city government should not be the highest of those hurdles. City government should encourage business and provide assistance and information so that our downtown economy is robust and exciting. Housing, I think it's obvious to everyone that Fort Morgan has a serious lack of housing, and most of all, affordable housing. Having lived in the Denver area, I'm fully aware of the insanity of that real estate market. Affordable housing there is nearly nonexistent. I think the city government can create an atmosphere that will attract investment in housing. If we are able to attract new business, we must have a place for those people who come with it to live. Multi as well as single-family housing should be considered in the mix. Why should you pick me to fill this term? First, I have the life experience to provide sound and logical consideration to problems. I have the ability to dig deep into an issue and break it down to the fundamentals in order to determine if it's best for the residents of the city. And lastly, I apply for this position with no agenda. The only reason I want this post is to serve my fellow citizens and give them a voice in determining the future of their city. In conclusion, I want to thank each and every one of you for this opportunity. If selected, I look forward to working with you and learning from each one of you. Questions? Questions?
Same as the others. I'll keep it consistent.
Okay.
Your job at La Prino is with a lot of...
Absolutely. I've already spoken to my management group, and they will give me the freedom required.
Very good.
Never a problem.
Anybody else have questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brandon. Anybody from the public interested in speaking?
Oh, I forgot you had that one. Does anybody wish to speak for any of the candidates? Sue.
I really didn't know we'd have an opportunity to speak, so I didn't prepare anything. But I just want to share with you this evening that I've had the honor to work with Susanna Wuardato for the last few years. We have talked a lot about a lot of issues that are facing our community around housing and education, how to deal with just all the challenges of being this growing rural community and having so many newcomers in town, and just so many things that we are looking at, our downtown rejuvenation, all of those issues. Susanna defines boots on the ground. She is on the front lines addressing these issues every single day, and she is endlessly inspiring to so many people in our community. So, I just want to throw that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Evelyn Hall. I own a business on Main Street. I have had the privilege... Well, I've lived here all my life, but I've had the privilege of having Tess come to me when she was 19 years old, and she worked for me for 20 years. And she didn't work for me. She worked in my building. But during that time, I had several tragedies happen in my life. My son died. Tess took over. She ran it for a year. In 2012, I had several surgeries, and I was out for two years. And Tess just took control. She just did it. She's been there. She can take any situation and make the best out of it. She's level-headed. She kept me level-headed most of the time because I could... I could get a little testy, but she'd keep me level-headed. So, I think she would be great on the council, and I think anybody that would work with her would really enjoy working with her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Tice Guro, and I'm currently a student at Morgan Community College. I had the privilege to work with Susanna at One Morgan County as a work-study, and I had no clue on what direction my life will take because as a college student, you don't know. And after working with Susanna within the past year, I... She's my role model. I want to be what she is doing, helping the community, building bridges with culture and just being involved and... Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else?
Can we speak now or...
Yeah.
I just want to say thank y'all, all three y'all, for applying and putting in for this right now. I know it's... City Council isn't the most glamorous job in the world, but thank y'all for putting in for it. It's great that we have three candidates. Coming from somebody that was appointed five years ago, filling a term, I was the only applicant. So, it's nice to see that people are getting involved, and regardless of what happens tonight with the vote, thank y'all for putting in. We have three quality candidates.
I agree. It's really nice to see that we've got three people interested rather than going around begging, trying to find one.
I want to echo that. Yeah, all three are quality candidates, so thanks.
And council members, if you would remember to put your names on the ballots.
We're not riding, I'm sorry.
No. You're already stuck.
And I think I would echo kind of what Clint and Ally said. I think of the candidates, the two that are not selected, when November comes around, once again, this is an open term come November. If you're still interested, I would encourage... I would... Sorry, I can't multitask. I would encourage you to, you know, go out and start after it again come November if, you know, you've had a chance to watch a little bit more. So, if today's not that day. Did you get six? Did you get all six?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like David Fowler and Susanna Wuardato are going to move on to the final ballot.
I will pass out now.
Maybe the final ballot. Find the right version. Okay. It looks like David Fowler and Susanna Wuardato are going to move on to the final ballot. Congratulations. Now, Dave, you're going to need to come and sit up here, and we're going to call the roll, and you're going to be off and running.
I got to swear at him first. Don't forget to swear at him. Actually, I think just come up here, David, because you'll have to swear you in first.
Where am I?
Just stay there for just a second. He'll come out to you.
Please, I promise not to ever...
Yeah, they didn't tell you that after we voted, you have to come and make decisions immediately.
I state your name.
Hi, David Fowler.
You solemnly swear in and affirm...
You solemnly swear in and affirm that I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution.
Laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
State of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
Charter and ordinance of the city of Fort Morgan.
The charter and ordinance of the city of Fort Morgan.
I will faithfully perform all duties pertaining to the office of council member.
I will faithfully perform all the duties pertaining to council. Council members.
Of the city of Fort Morgan.
City of Fort Morgan.
For the best of my abilities.
Thank you very much. I don't have a black pen. Okay. I can sit up there?
They're on the area.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is his copy.
Yeah, you can give that to me.
They put me next to you, so you keep an eye on me?
Yeah, something like this.
Great. This is your copy, David.
Thank you.
Voting, yes. Abstain, which you hardly ever use, and that is no.
Okay.
Okay. That's your packet.
Okay.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Councilmember David Fowler.
You got you. Say again, I'm sorry.
He's calling roll.
Oh, here. I'm sorry.
Doug Sashow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
This will be your...
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Deal, and then these are all the packets that we have. They're all the addendums that will come with that.
Okay.
So, we're partway through that. We'll be down by eight.
Okay. All right.
Okay, next on the agenda is presentation on the appointment of Michael Schmeckley to the Historic Preservation Board. Councilmember Anderson.
Thanks, Your Honor. We met the Historic Preservation Board last month, March, and they went over different applications. We had a... Someone stepped down due to a relocation, and so Michael Schmeckley put in for filling the vacancy, and he... The historic board voted unanimously to appoint him, and so I'm just bringing it before council tonight.
Okay.
Any questions?
Is he here tonight? Oh, is he here?
I don't think so.
Okay. I just wanted to wave at him.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Motion or resolution?
Motion.
I would offer a motion to appoint Michael Schmeckley to the Historic Preservation Board.
Second. I have a motion by Clint Anderson, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. Motion carries. You'll form him?
Yep.
Next is presentation on bids for a rough mower for the golf course. Mr. Gibbons, long time, no see.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
If you're under budget, then it's good. If you're under budget, then it's good.
Then we're good. Were you... Were the three... Three candidates, were they given the packets previously or were you able to review this?
I believe he's just looking at them.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking that I'd try to keep it short and simple. If I need to, we can do the long way. But we had $85,000 approved in the Conservation Trust 2019 budget. We went out to bid on March 8th, opened the bids on March 25th. We received two bids, one from L.L. Johnson and one from Potestio Brothers. Potestio Brothers was lower bid, $59,698. L.L. Johnson, $64,080. We are requesting council approval to accept the bid in the amount of $64,080 from L.L. Johnson. The reason for this is because of our two existing mowers, the Toro mowers, the same exact make and model as the mower that was bid. They would have interchangeable parts, parts that we already have in stock. I know in the past, when we've done this, I've been able to do a parts list and a parts breakdown of what we keep on hand and the price of each. Unfortunately for me, but fortunately for my mechanic, he was on vacation last week. So, he's the guy who knows stocking numbers, can tell you numbers of parts. However, we feel that these parts and having a spare mower with all the same parts that we could steal in the short term off of for the existing mower would make up for it in the long run. Any questions?
Have we done business with L.L. Johnson before?
We have. We've done business with both companies before.
Happy with their... Theirs both service?
Yeah, their service is second to none really in the golf industry.
Great.
Does anybody have any other questions? Mr. Gibbons? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid in the amount of $64,080 from L.L. Johnson for a rough mower to utilize by the golf course.
Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is presentation on bids for a light-duty utility cart for the golf course. Mr. Gibbons?
Again, a Conservation Trust item from 2019, $25,000 in the budget. The same exact days, we went out for bid on March 8th, opened the bids on March 25th. We were actually lucky enough to receive five bids for this. L.L. Johnson, Potestio Brothers, 21st Century, Masix, and Wiggins Electric. So, it was nice to see some new companies come into the fold. The lowest bid was Masix, $9,898. However, they didn't meet bid specifications. It's kind of a even lighter duty than a light-duty cart that we're currently looking for. The lowest bid was Potestio Brothers, $10,723. That did meet bid specifications. So, staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid in the amount of $10,723 from Potestio Brothers for the cart. They were the lowest bid to meet bid specifications. Any questions?
And Maticic or Masic didn't meet it because it's a lighter duty?
Yeah, and one of our main items, stopping and going, the cart that we're hoping to replace doesn't have four-wheel hydraulic brakes. It has manual adjust brakes. Stopping on the golf course is fairly important. They didn't have that on their cart either.
Fairly important?
Huh?
Fairly important?
Yeah, somewhat important. I mean, it depends who's driving it, but when you get 16- and 17-year-old seasonals, sometimes you tell them that you need to slow down a little, and slowing down a little for them is a little bit different than slowing down for me. I'm sure Doug can attest from years as a police officer or high school.
Okay. No other questions? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Potestio Brothers for a utility cart in the amount of $10,723. I'm in the amount of $10,723.
I second that. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is council acting as a local liquor licensing authority. We'll have a presentation on the renewal of a liquor... Retail liquor store license for Riada Liquors.
I believe he's just looking at them.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking that I'd try to keep it short and simple.
Yeah, but I was on the advisory board for a while, so...
If I need to, we can do it a long way, but we had $85,000 approved in the Conservation Trust 2019 budget. We went out to bid on March 8th, opened the bids on March 25th. We received two bids, one from L.L. Johnson and one from Potestio Brothers. Potestio Brothers was lower bid, $59,698. L.L. Johnson, $64,080. We are requesting council approval to accept the bid in the amount of $64,080 from L.L. Johnson. The reason for this is because of our two existing mowers, the Toro mowers, the same exact make and model as the mower that was bid. They would have interchangeable parts, parts that we already have in stock. I know in the past, when we've done this, I've been able to do a parts list and a parts breakdown of what we keep on hand and the price of each. Unfortunately for me, but fortunately for my mechanic, he was on vacation last week, so he's the guy who knows stocking numbers, can tell you numbers of parts. However, we feel that these parts and having a spare mower with all the same parts that we could steal in the short term off of for the existing mower would make up for it in the long run. Any questions?
Have we done business with L.L. Johnson before?
We have. We've done business with both companies before.
Are you happy with their service?
Yeah, their service is second to none, really, in the golf industry.
Great.
Does anybody have any other questions, Mr. Gibbons? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid in the amount of $64,080 from L.L. Johnson for a rough mower to utilize by the golf course.
Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is presentation on bids for a light-duty utility cart for the golf course. Mr. Gibbons.
Again, a Conservation Trust item from 2019, $25,000 in the budget. The same exact days, we went out for bid on March 8th, opened the bids on March 25th. We were actually lucky enough to receive five bids for this. L.L. Johnson, Potestio Brothers, 21st Century, Masix, and Wiggins Electric. So it was nice to see some new companies come into the fold. The lowest bid was Masix, $9,898. However, they didn't meet bid specifications. It's kind of a even lighter duty than a light-duty cart that we're currently looking for. The lowest bid was Potestio Brothers, $10,723. That did meet bid specifications. So staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid in the amount of $10,723 from Potestio Brothers for the cart. They were the lowest bid to meet bid specifications. Any questions?
And Maticic or Masic didn't meet it because it's a lighter duty?
Yeah, and one of our main items, stopping and going, the cart that we're hoping to replace doesn't have four-wheel hydraulic brakes. It has manual adjust brakes. Stopping on the golf course is fairly important. They didn't have that on their cart either.
Fairly important?
Huh?
Fairly important?
Yeah, somewhat important. I mean, it depends who's driving it, but when you get 16- and 17-year-old seasonals, sometimes you tell them that you need to slow down a little, and slowing down a little for them is a little bit different than slowing down for me, as I'm sure Doug can attest from years as a police officer or high school.
Okay. No other questions, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Potestio Brothers for a utility cart in the amount of $10,723.
I second that. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
Next is council acting as a local liquor licensing authority. We'll have a presentation on the renewal of a liquor...retail liquor store license for Riada Liquors at 1305 Barlow Road with a previous state violation. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of the establishments that was caught with a violation during a state compliance check in December 2017. Their current license expires in May, and so the timing of their last renewal was...didn't allow us to present this at that time. In December 2017, they were inspected and were found to have permitted the selling, serving, giving, or procuring of an alcohol beverage to an 18-year-old underage purchaser, and also failed to verify that the consumer was at least 21 years of age. So basically, they sold to a minor and didn't check ID. The way this works is the state and the liquor licensee get together and negotiate an agreement on the...what the penalty will be. Under the order they reached, it was a 10-day suspension with five days held in abeyance pending no further violations. And they also...instead of the five days of active suspension, they were permitted to pay a $496 fine in lieu of the active suspension. There are no other violations in this licensee's file. The manager of the establishment has been asked to attend tonight to answer any questions that you may have. The police department has performed its usual inspection of the license premises, and no violations were found, although the city liquor license and sales tax license were not readily visible. A copy of the inspection report was in your packet, and the city attorney's office has also reviewed and found it in order. So staff recommendation is to decide in the best interests of the city whether to approve the application for renewal of the retail liquor store license for Riada Liquors LLC, DBA Riada Liquors at 1305 North Barlow Road.
Hi. I'm the owner, not the manager. He's at a baseball game with his son, so I am here. And I'm not sure about...they should have the sales tax licenses, so I will make...
Yeah, it was there. It was...
Oh, okay.
He just marked it as not readily visible.
Okay, all right.
And your name?
Kathy Sang.
Okay.
I can just tell you that, yeah, we stress that a lot, and the employee that sold the alcohol was terminated. We also updated our POS system so that you have to scan the driver's license before the register will open. So, you know, they can't make a sale unless they've scanned the ID, so... And we continue to stress, but...so...
Is that new, the POS system for scanning the license?
Well, we've had it now since the violation occurred. We contacted our processor. And that we purchased the POS system through, and, yeah, so now... So once in a while, the scanner won't work on a license, and I don't know, for some reason, you know, maybe it's roughed up or something, but you still have to put the birth date in before it'll register. So of course, there's, you know, ways around it, but it has helped a lot. It's...and just makes them more aware that they need to be careful.
So do you still do individual employee training?
Yes. I mean, when they're hired, that is, you know, that is very much stressed, that and the cigarettes. Both.
Alcohol.
I've got...I've got three teenage grandchildren. I don't like people selling liquor to teenagers. So...
But it definitely sounds like the new POS system, that's great that there's finally something out there like that.
Right.
It sounds like it takes the decision-making process out of the hands.
Right.
If anytime anybody is buying alcohol, they have to scan a driver's license, then that takes them having to decide, okay, this person looks 30.
Right.
This person looks 18.
Yeah. Well, we stress, you know...we stress that our...I have two...they're liquor stores and convenience stores, and I have two locations, yeah, and we stress if they look under 40, ask them for an ID. I mean, it...
It's good practice.
But you get young cashiers, and sometimes...
And it's difficult, and especially in small communities, it's difficult because a lot of people know people.
Right, right.
And so, you know, and there's a lot of peer pressure and, you know...
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's tough, especially for young people.
But we do as much as we possibly can do to train and make sure that's an important aspect of their job, to check IDs.
Any other questions? If none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the renewal of a retail liquor license for Riada Liquors at 1305 Barlow Road.
Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Try not to be bad.
Next is the council acting once again as a local liquor licensing authority. This is a presentation on formal acceptance of a new application for a hotel/restaurant liquor license for All About the Smoke LLC at 617 Main Street, and request to schedule a public hearing in an application for...on the application for May 7th. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is kind of the first step toward All About the Smoke obtaining a brand-new liquor license. They've been contemplating it for some time, and recently got all their paperwork in order and submitted. What will happen is we're asking the council to...this has been reviewed by my office, by the police department, and the city attorney's office, and deemed to be complete and in order. We're not ruling on the merits or anything. We just want the council to formally accept this application, and that will start the 30-day clock, after which that we can have the public hearing. So the...if the application is formally accepted, you would set a public hearing for May 7th, and the property would be posted, a legal notice would be published in the newspaper. During that 30-day period, the applicant would have to...well, they don't have to, but the easiest way to prove support in the community is by petitioning. So they'll be collecting signatures of people that support the issuance of the liquor license. And as I said, the police department and city attorney have reviewed these applications and found them to be in order. And so that's all we're asking for, is formal acceptance and scheduling of that public hearing.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on formal acceptance of a new application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for All About the Smoke LLC at 617 Main Street, and request to schedule a public hearing on the application for May 7th.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation and possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Orange Skies Free Fall Skydiving Company for the use of the Fort Morgan Airport. Mr. Blameyer.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Hello.
What you have in your packet tonight is a letter of agreement for a new commercial aeronautical activity at the Fort Morgan Municipal Airport. It's critical to recognize that this is a commercial aeronautical activity. Fort Morgan Airport is funded largely in part by grants from the Federal Aviation Administration, and because of such, our airport must be non-discriminate for activities that are defined by the FAA as commercial aeronautical activities. Sport parachuting is defined as such, and so we are required to at least allow aeronautical activities as such to operate it at the airport with reasonable terms and conditions through various letters of agreement and other types of agreements that we might have operators sign at our airport. We have worked tirelessly. This is my stack of paperwork that I have gone through in the last two months to get to this point, to come to a letter of agreement for the sport parachuting operator, commonly known as skydivers, to operate it at our airport. I've spent countless hours on the phone with the FAA, the operator, and the U.S. Sport Parachuting Organization to come to this agreement that you have before you tonight. Really appreciate the efforts of Nina, who has spent several hours as well refining the agreement that you have before you. We've had several meetings with the airport advisory board, and finally have a letter of agreement that they have approved and recommended for your approval tonight. I'm not sure I have a lot more to say about it. You have the agreement, you've seen it. Hopefully, you've read all of the terms and conditions. I do think we've got a reasonable agreement before you tonight. We're excited to put this part of the airport behind us, I think, and have this finalized tonight, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me or of Nina, perhaps, and I know there are representatives here from the operator tonight. Mike Bone is a gentleman that I've been working with. As I understand it, he is not available tonight, but he does have a couple of folks that he's sent in his stead, so happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
You're just glad to get that big file up your desk. I would like to...sitting on the airport advisory board, Steve has spent a phenomenal amount of time addressing this. He was criticized for not giving it his total dedication, and that is the farthest thing from the truth. He's gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. Nina has reviewed it as well, so I would commend you on your efforts for it, and nobody's going to challenge your integrity and your abilities and time constraints for this, because I know, reading all the different drafts, you have spent a phenomenal amount of time on it. I've had questions from people in the community regarding this. Why is it taken down and brushed, didn't allow it? And Steve addressed that aspect, is we receive federal funding for our airport, which has gone for apron upgrades, the runway upgrades. We can't deny somebody in there, but we can utilize this agreement to hold their feet to the fire. They know that they will have to abide by this agreement, and so I would just thank you for your time and effort. I know you've spent way more time than is necessary on it, and you've done a very admirable job of it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Anybody have any questions, or...Steve, I got one. Probably addressed it a million times. What's your safety record?
That's, you know, I think that's a question better answered by them, but that question was asked a number of times. You know, how safe is your operation? And, you know, I think that's been satisfactorily answered by the operator. I don't even recall that they've had any injuries other than minor twisted ankles, this type of thing, that you would expect to come from this type of operation. I mean, you can't possibly jump the thousands of times that they do annually and not have something, but I'm not aware of any deaths. That's the one that we get all the time, you know, has anybody ever died? I don't believe that's the case. I think they can speak to that. No major injuries, so, yeah, I think just...there are minor things that come from these things. Obviously, at airport...rural airports, it's common to have prairie dog holes or uneven ground and these types of things, so I think you can expect things of that nature, but no major injuries.
And I know that one part of the agreement is they have a specified landing area that they need to fall in and stay within that area.
Correct. The USPA has specific guidelines about the size of those types of things, and we've granted them access to about two acres of ground, I mean, right at two acres of ground for their operation. They're paying a non-exclusive fee for that, which means others could use it and pay the same fee. It's a lesser rate than our exclusive rate for, you know, hangar space, if you will, and so they'll operate within that area. Obviously, there can be times when they'll fall outside of that area, assuming that's on the airport. I'm not overly concerned about that. If it occurs off-airport property, that's a civil matter. We won't get involved. The agreement does require that they at least notify me that they had, you know, an off-site landing occur. That way, at least, I know if somebody calls me and says, hey, I just had a skydiver fall on my property and do X, well, I want to know about it. We won't get involved. It's a civil matter. That's...it's in the county, so I would anticipate that they can deal with that through the various means that are available to them, so...
That was my question.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Blameyer?
One other question comes to mind. You talked about just having minor sprains and stuff like that, but having a restricted landing area, do you do anything to prep the landing area as far as maintaining it or doing anything like that, then?
We'll mow it as often as we have, which has been about...I think last year, we mowed that area once. The grass stays, I don't know, I mean, it's going to get long. My larger concern isn't necessarily with the size of the length of the grass, as it is the rodents and rattlesnakes. And so I've made that clear, that we have both, and so the operator is quite aware that that can be, you know, a hazard. So we've made that clear, but we don't intend to mow it any more often than we have, which is once annually.
My thought and wondering about is if they would do anything to try and level the ground, you know, at least at onset and everything like that, that that might preclude some of those injuries.
Yeah, I think we can work with the operator with that. I mean, it is...there is native grasses on it, and so I'd be really concerned that we would come in and scrape the ground flat. If we did that, we would require that it be reseated and that that grass be established very quickly. I drove out to the AWAS today to look at a repair that's going on. It's not too bad. I mean, there obviously are some rutting and various things in there, but for the most part, it's flat, you know, it's...there's no ravines or anything of this nature in that area, so I think for the most part, should be fine. But, you know, there is some rotting from various maintenance vehicles and things from time to time, but hopefully, it's suitable.
And the rattlesnakes and the rodents just add to the excitement.
Okay. I believe you.
Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain action.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for the Orange Skies Free Fall Skydiving Company to use the Fort Morgan Airport.
Second. Okay, I think Mr. Longacre wants to...
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Shall I take back my...
No, we will just wait to vote.
Okay.
Can you sign in, please, sir? There's a sheet of paper right next to the podium.
I'm John Longacre, and we own the land north of the airport, and we've had problems with the skydivers in the past and the present, and I will make a correction. There has been one killed on the airport from skydiving, a failed shoot. So there has been some fatalities. been some fatalities. I've had some injuries from the previous skydivers from spooking our cattle. I've had some shoulders and ribs dislocated, and almost got my neck broke, when our cattle gets spooked from the airport activities. And I've also caught the red motorbike out picking up skydivers in our pasture, 2:30 in the morning, and I followed their tracks all the way down the runway. I don't need this kind of trespass, it is very hard to get trespassing controlled through the Sheriff Department, because all they say, they, everybody gives them permission they have to run, and that ain't fair to me, when they're trespassing in the first place without permission. I talked to the Sheriff's Department, and they said that they should rent a big enough space that they can be off a half mile. Well, the previous people got as far as three miles off of their targets because of the winds. So, this wind factor, jumping out of an airplane, has a lot, that just can't pick an acre or two acres and expect them to hit it, I know that for a fact. We have a problem with Scott, or Kyle Scott, with his aviation. I just caught him a week ago, flying his little red helicopter within less than 50 feet, making three passes over our pasture, pretty close to over a half mile away from the, the airport, and I have filed a complaint to the FAA, as the one I just gave you. It's a nuisance problem with him. I've had some planes that he dumped flush water, and I've had the blue helicopter a few years ago, that were using the spotlight, chasing the cattle over on Wendell Whacker's property. You have a problem with that operator, and I would suggest you to make some adjustments for the protections and the safety of the people of this community. You have any more questions to ask me?
I don't, no. Does anybody else?
And I, I will file some more complaints to the FAA against the airport and, and the operator.
Sir, thank you so much for coming and telling us about your experiences. Can you tell us what year, the former? I've only been in Fort Morgan for 10 years, so can you tell us about?
Ever since Scott Kyle's been taking over the airport, I've been having flyover problems. He flies over our house, he's supposed to, under agriculture rules, he's supposed to avoid houses with those airplanes. And so, this last incident, I got the date, and I can't, I didn't bring my glasses, can you read that date off?
Can you read the?
It was just about two weeks ago, when the last incident.
March 28.
And, uh, the blue helicopter, probably close to about four years ago now.
March, March 12 was when the event.
And now, I seen, I seen his helicopter, I was picking up hay bales, feeding, getting ready to go feed some cows, and he just flies within 50 feet, he flies south, and comes back north right over the pickup, and then he turns around and go back, and he seen, I seen him, and so they hide all the way down the canyons, and come out across Highway 52 at a low altitude, too. And I don't know if exactly if it's Scott Kyle, or one of his employees. I do have a message on my phone from the Sheriff's Department, admitting that it was his red helicopter.
So, your experience with the parachuters was a company 10 years ago, 20 years ago?
It was about five years ago, four years ago, that they were out there.
Okay.
And it was the same bunch of people that was hotdogging down at the brush, and also, you need to watch the internet, because when they start this hotdogging stuff, they'll post stuff on the internet about how nasty these farmers are, and that ain't right to us, because they're the one that's trespassing, they're the one that's doing the violations. And these noisy airplanes that you've got flying up, they're these stunt planes, when you're working with cattle, and certain times, our cattle get plump, impossible to deal with. My brother's even got hurt from a cow, five, or we're about four miles away from the airport. When these cattle gets spooked by these helicopters, or these planes, it takes a long time for these cattle to be civil enough that we can work with them when these airplanes take off and, and that excessive noise. So, it's been a long problem with Scott Kyle, ever since he has been the manager of the Fort Morgan Airport. Thank you for your time.
And sir, I think the clerk needed you to sign in on the sheet up there.
Okay, I will.
Your Honor, is there an opportunity before we vote for a comment?
Yeah, we will.
I would just, I would just encourage, based upon the testimony by, that the, as you're operating, take into consideration, I'm, I'm speaking more to the operators, as you're operating, make sure you're taking into consideration the agricultural, you know, dimensions of our community, and we want to make sure everybody in all aspects of our community are being good neighbors, and, you know, where there are situations where incidents occur, I think it would be who, you know, both sides to work really closely together to try to resolve any conflict before it, you know, escalates, so, I think.
I have, I have another comment. Our family farm is 100 years old, I've been out there 60 years. I do know when Smith ran the airport, we didn't have these kind of problems, I could go talk to Mr. Smith, and these problems would be resolved, and Mr. Smith was a good man to work with. Scott has never been that way. He'll come and apologize for when he gets caught, but that's all I get out of it, but then he'll back doing it again.
Just as a comment along those lines, I think it might be worthwhile talking to him as an operator, and trying to point out, just as Councilmember Northrup was talking about, that we need to be good neighbors, and be characteristic of trying to respect your rights there.
Yeah, and, and you, and they fly these helicopters around, or airplanes around, they got a 500-foot ceiling that they supposed to be on. When they duck below into a draw, that ain't 500 feet. And so, for a manager that's supposed to be, quote, "for the benefit of this community", and don't follow his own rules that he's supposed to be, I think it's time for removal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to skydiving. We have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. Go by a little call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation, a report on activities of the Economic Development and Marketing Department, Ms. Crossway.
Can you sign in as yourself?
Susannah.
Mm-hmm.
I know. No second thoughts will have. the city of Fort Morgan. So, I wanted to come up today and kind of give a presentation on what our department is going to look like going forward, and really what our strategic plan is, and how we can go ahead and move that towards some measurable action. So, starting first with the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it mirrors a lot of what the 2016 Comprehensive Plan includes, but this is a lot more specific in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. So, starting first with promoting productive relationships, moving on to manage attraction, retention, and expansion of the city's economic environment, streamlining public processes, and then lastly endorsing responsible and critical development. So, based on these four goals, what we then come up with is moving on to four areas that we can focus our goals, our areas that we can focus on achieving these four goals. So, those strategic areas of focus are marketing, retaining and attracting businesses, housing, and revitalizing our downtown area. Within each of these areas of focus, there are programs, initiatives, and plans in, that we've developed, and I believe if we implement them correctly and thoroughly, we should be able to achieve what the strategic plan is in terms of economic development and marketing the city correctly. Something to note is that with these areas of focus, they are meant to always be looked at and reevaluated to ensure that we're in line with what it is that we want to accomplish as a city, and ultimately that it's reflective of what the community wants. So, beginning with the first area of focus, which is marketing, what we really want to do is streamline the design of our marketing material, so that includes print, it includes digital advertising, whatever it may be. We want to make sure that what we put out as a city is streamlined across all boards. Every department has their own marketing that they do, and while every department obviously markets different information and to a different audience, what we want to make sure is that the design of it really is streamlined. And also, what we also want to do is the information as well that we put out, to have it be consistent. So, what you see up there is a tagline, "Our focus is to be the city of choice for ourselves and future generations, beautiful, clean, and safe." That's a tagline that's on our website, and I really think that if we move forward with our marketing, that that's something that should be on all of our marketing material, whether it be print or digital, because what we can do is create some type of tagline association to the city, so that when residents or visitors see that tagline, they immediately know, oh, that's Fort Morgan. The second part of marketing is to increase our online presence, and we want to use, do that by incorporating online analytics as a way to measure our performance, and really our return on investment. So, marketing at times can be very expensive, and we don't want to use money if it's not actually returning any investment for us, so really, marketing our stuff in a strategic manner, I think is essential. And the most important point is when we are marketing, especially when it comes to digital marketing, or even online marketing, is to avoid this idea of data dumping or information overload. For a specific example, if a business is looking to come to our area, there's a lot of data that they need, and if we're just dumping information on our website, it's really not going to motivate them to want to look through all that. So, I think that if we use GIS technology, such as tools, or mappings, that provide these businesses information, and that's interactive, I think it's going to essentially show them that not only as a city are we progressive, and we're moving forward with technology, but that we have the resources to offer them when it comes to making the right choice to coming to Fort Morgan. So, the second area of focus, and this is just one part of it, is retaining businesses. And retaining businesses is really essential as a city, we have to highlight and showcase what we already have here, if we want to move forward with attracting new businesses. And this is broken down into two parts. We first want to highlight our local and regional businesses, and we want to do that, or we're thinking of doing that with two programs that we've come up with. The first program is the Business of the Month Program, and what this program does is, any business that wishes to participate will be put in a raffle, and monthly, we would select that business, we would highlight them throughout the community, we would also advertise through local mediums, such as the radio or newspaper, and we would provide signage for them outside of their building to showcase that they were selected as Business of the Month. I think this is a really great initiative, because what it does is, again, it showcases the businesses that we have, and lets them know that the city is there as a support. And what's really great about this program is that it allows us to collaborate with other outside agencies, something that I noticed when I came here to Fort Morgan, is that there's a lot of organizations that have similar goals to what the city wants to accomplish, which is, you know, create a higher quality of life for the residents, and revitalize our downtown, and promote businesses and attraction, and if we can pool our resources together and work collaboratively, we can achieve that a lot faster and efficiently. The second program is Community Movie Night Program. What this would be is, using our local theater, Cover 4, they would distribute a certain amount of tickets to a business that's willing to participate, and that business would hand out those movie tickets for a select showing and time to its patrons. So, this is really great, because not only does it create more business and revenue for the movie, because of the tickets that are being sold, but it's also assist the business that's willing to participate in creating more foot traffic with their patrons. The second part of retaining businesses now comes to identifying who our major employers are, or just in general, our major businesses in the area. Those are just a few that I've listed, and there's many more that we can identify, I'm sure, but what I think is important is developing strong relationships with these businesses to understand what their needs are, and to ensure that they're willing to not only keep their business here in Fort Morgan, but expand it. And so, developing and maintaining those relationships, I think, is really essential. And following that area of focus is, comes attracting businesses, and so in order to attract businesses, we're going to have to really look at what it is that we do as a city, and create that business-friendly environment, but also understand that we want to ensure that we're endorsing responsible and critical development. So, of course, we welcome businesses, but we want businesses that are going to also do something for the city. And so, what we're going to be looking at is looking at businesses that can provide a range of job growth opportunities for our residents, will diversify our economy, and hopefully add amenities to the residents as well. Some industries that we've identified that we believe can do that are agriculture, manufacturing, healthcare, professional services, and retail, and there are many more industries that we can also target as well, but I think it's important to keep at the forefront, that if we want a business to come to Fort Morgan, we welcome them, but we also want to make sure that they're doing something for the city as well. The next area of focus, which is very important and very critical, is housing. As stated, housing is, is an important issue in Fort Morgan, and we can spend a lot of resources trying to attract businesses to come here, but if we don't have the housing to back up their employment base, then it's going to make it a very difficult job, and I think nearly impossible. It's important for us to look at the type of housing that we need by discussing this with the community, and with external and internal stakeholders, and so really, what we want to do is create access to affordable and diverse housing, and work with our regional and local firms to develop that type of multi- and single-family housing units, depending on what the community needs. To do this, in order to be competitive, we're going to have to provide short-term incentives, and this can include such as utilities and infrastructure, and we're also going to have to make sure that, working with these developers, that when they are building these homes, that the cost is not so much that, at the point when it comes to sell these homes, that our community cannot afford it. We need to make sure that we use data that shows what the median income is for this community, and the demographics of Fort Morgan, to ensure sustainability and affordability. The third part of housing is, again, going back to our major employers and understanding what their needs are. From the conversations that have been had thus far, workforce housing is a pri, it's a need in our community, and if we want to keep these large businesses here, if we want them to grow, and if we want to attract more larger businesses, we're going to have to make sure that workforce housing becomes a priority for us, and ensuring that employers can sustain their employment base, and ultimately, that residents not only work here, but that they live here. The final area of focus is going to be revitalizing our downtown area. With, I believe that our downtown area has a lot of potential as a city, but we need to invest to make that potential seem to not only the businesses that we have here already, but outside businesses as well. With downtown... With downtown areas that we've seen that are most successful are the ones that revitalize themselves as an entertainment and arts hub center for not only its residents, but for visitors as well. So, as a city, we need to promote and recruit businesses that are going to add that type of value to the area, and again, the idea of amenities to the cities, to the city and the residents. We also, again, want to work really collaboratively with our external partners in trying to understand, again, what the pulse is for the downtown area. They have a lot of, I think, really great ideas and understanding of what business owners need there and really what the community in general needs. And so, working with them and sharing information is going to be really critical in ensuring that moving forward, Fort Morgan is prosperous and that our economy is diverse, and that we are moving forward in attracting and retaining businesses. Two programs that have been developed that I believe can promote growth and expansion for our downtown area are the Facade Improvement Program and the Downtown Inventory Program. Beginning with the Facade Improvement Program, we had it in place a while back, and so I want to bring it back, but in this case, what I want to do is I want to streamline it and make it more efficient, so that businesses can take advantage of this program. The program itself would allow businesses or property owners to apply for a reimbursement grant that the city would pay for. The city would pay up to 50% of the cost for a business or property owner to improve the exterior facade of their building, but with a cap of up to $3,000 that the city would pay out. This is a really great program, because not only does it revitalize the outside exterior of the buildings in Fort, in the downtown area of Fort Morgan, but also allows us, again, to build and maintain that relationship with the businesses that we have here. The second program is the Downtown Inventory Program, which is a really unique program, because it allows businesses in that area and the city to really understand what is already there and how we can market it strategically. So, the Downtown Inventory Program would be a program that would allow businesses or property owners to have as-built drawings rendered of their site. This would allow, what as-built drawings are, really a footprint of what is inside a building and what changes have occurred. This would allow, I believe, businesses to have that tool at their disposal to understand, okay, if I want to expand my business, what's already here, and how can I make it better? It would also allow the city to have an inventory of what is in the downtown area, and hopefully with that information marketed strategically to businesses that are looking to come to our area. My hope is really that with these two programs, that we make, we market them in a way that makes it very accessible for the businesses or property owners to take advantage of, but also ensure that this is in line with what the city wants and what the residents are looking for when it comes to revitalizing the downtown area. With both programs and with all programs that were mentioned today, I would be the point of contact to ensure efficiency, but also ensure that anyone who's looking to talk to the city about businesses, whether it's growth, expansion, or relocation, that they know that there's a point of contact for them, and that they're not going to be ran around from different departments trying to figure out what it is they need. It's a one-stop shop, and it starts here and it ends here, and we make sure that we service them in a way that's efficient and effective for them. That is the end of my presentation, but before I concluded, I did want to say one more thing. I wanted to thank Jeff for providing really the vision of what Fort Morgan has the potential to become. When I started here, he was really able to show me a lot of the progress that's already been made and progress that's in the works, but also what we're aiming to do in Fort Morgan. And so, I think that was really crucial when we collaborated on the type of programs and plans and initiatives that we have in place. But I would be happy to answer any questions you guys would have.
I just have one more of a comment, really. When I've been to meetings where they talk about trying to recruit employers, major employers and everything like that, and you've touched upon having the housing and being welcoming and making the process good, but the other one is an available workforce. So, I would just, where you had offered out all of this and everything, too, if you concentrate on some certain area, if you're not already thinking about maybe working with the school as far as developing a curriculum that would attract that particular business or whatever else, too, is something else to just kind of include in your game plan.
No, definitely, I agree, and I think that's where it becomes essential to collaborate with all these partners that are here in the city, local organizations. They have such a wealth of information and access to that information that it becomes essential for us to collaborate, for example, with Morgan Community College.
And I think that the history with MCC is they are very amenable to anything like that as far as trying to help and trying to do anything they can to kind of give back to communities.
Definitely.
So, I think that's a good thing. Second question is, so far with jumping in and your experience so far and everything, do you think that us having the fiber in ground and the fiber network is, gives Fort Morgan a competitive edge?
I believe so, especially in the location of Fort Morgan, and it's considered a rural area, to have that type of advantage when marketing it to businesses is huge, and that's where the marketing really comes into play, is ensuring that we're marketing what makes Fort Morgan unique, because everyone has a data. Every city's going to offer data to and information to these businesses, but it's about marketing strategically what makes this location unique against all others.
One of the questions I had is, you talked about the Downtown Inventory Program. I think it's, the concept is great. Would we consider having that available for potential businesses? Because I could see some value in a company that's maybe looking to come to Fort Morgan, and if they know that we, our downtown area, we have a movie theater, and we have an ice cream shop, and we have a restaurant, and we have, you know, this, all the different things, we have, you know, the node, and they may be able to strategically decide, well, hey, that niche that's missing in this cultural, and I really liked it, we were talking about as an entertainment and arts, they can see where that gap is, which might encourage maybe somebody local in the community that wants to start a business, that this is that niche where it might fit in, so you're not becoming another duplication, you know, of a, of a store, so it's just a thought.
Yeah, no, definitely, that's a good idea. Ultimately, the goal is to make it easy for these businesses to start up in Fort Morgan. We don't want to make it harder for them than it already has to be. What we want to do is ensure efficiency across all lines, and that's definitely something that we can add to that program.
One of the things that we're really focused on, as was pointed out in the presentation, is how do we make this information available in a way that's not an overload to people? And as you pointed out, you know, will this information be available for businesses? That's what we're hoping to match up, what Sarah's doing with our GIS department, and come up with some simple maps and easy renditions of, like you're saying, what is, what's in the downtown currently, but also what's available for somebody who wants to come in and move in down there. And so, yeah, that, that's definitely part of that inventory program is to not only show, hopefully show what's there, but what, what can be developed there as well.
And thank you for that. The presentation was very educational. Thank you for the work that you're doing. You, you know, you came in, you haven't been here that long, and you fit the ground running, and, you know, it's, this was good information for us to have.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the facade improvement program? You said that that would be a city reimbursement up to $30,000 for facade improvements?
Yeah, so it would be, it's a reimbursement grant program, so if a business wants to upgrade the exterior of their building, they can do so, and we would reimburse up to 50% of the cost, but the max would be $3,000.
Reimbursement?
Reimbursement. So, they would have to have the money upfront to pay for the cost of improving the building, and then from there, we would reimburse them up to 50% of that cost, but the cap is $3,000. So, if it costs them $3,000 to upgrade the exterior of their building, we would pay 1,500 of that, as long as they met the requirements. And what I did really with the existing facade program that was in place, what I did was just streamline it, so that it's easy for them to know what qualifies, what doesn't qualify, and who the point of contact is.
And ultimately, that program can be modified. It'll be something that we bring specifically back to council to make sure that you're good with what it is that we're doing, if it needs to be more or less. We can definitely make those modifications from a policy perspective, but I think, you know, the downtown being a major focus of concern for citizens in recent months, we want to make sure that we're taking a proactive approach to addressing some of those issues.
What program are you most excited about?
The Downtown Facade Program, yeah. That's, I think it's really great, and it's innovative, and from the research that's been done, a lot of downtown areas that are successful now, it's because they put programs like that in place that really help the businesses know that not only does the city support them, but that their business can be successful.
And I think we heard earlier from Ms. Mann, when she was talking about some of her qualifications, I, you know, I think it would be beneficial for us to be connecting up where you were talking about, an arts program and murals, and making sure that we're, we're connecting up with the chamber, with, you know, with one Morgan County, with all of those entities that we have out there, and, you know, not necessarily half of the city be the end-all, be-all, but we have a lot of great people in our community that have great ideas and some, you know, if it's an arts and a cultural center, maybe we need to be headed down that direction of adding some art.
Exactly.
You know, to what we're doing down there. So, you know, I, I think you've, you've got a couple of really good resources that are in the room tonight, so.
And I would only add that Sarah's doing a spectacular job. She has hit the ground running, and, you know, in, in providing her a vision and direction, she's just going and making that happen, and I really appreciate all the work that she's putting into, and she's really buying into the community and what we need to get done. Very talented, we're very lucky to have her, and, you know, the other benefit that she brings to the office that we haven't had in the past is she's bilingual and speaks Spanish and, and can also assist some of our other businesses in the community in ways that we haven't been able to reach out before, so I think that's a really great added component to the Economic Development Department.
Great work.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next is public comment, audience participation for items not on the agenda this evening.
Good evening, Councilman and Mayor.
Hi.
Thank you for the opportunity to give my public comment. I timed it, that's less than three minutes. And it's respectful. Napoleon said, "The world suffers a lot, not because of the violence of bad people, but because of the silence of good people." With that said, I'm speaking up. Have you heard of the acronym TEAM, Together Everyone Achieves More? Our community has suffered a lot this past year. We've been divided, council has been divided amongst yourselves, and city staff have been divided amongst themselves. You seem to have forgotten that appointed officials work for you, not them, not you for them. Council has allowed appointed officials who work for our city to control by intimidation and deception the very decisions that you are making that affect this community as a whole, and I submit to you that a change is needed. Citizens have come into these council chambers and voiced their concerns, only to be ridiculed. We've been called names, disrespected by some of you on council and by some appointed officials. Mayor Shaver, I submit to you that there is a need to reel in the manipulative abuse of power by some appointed official, that they need to be instructed to rise to a higher standard, or their positions reconsidered. I'm asking council to fix the problems from within, which is amongst you. It's not the citizens. We need transparency and accountability. Our community deserves that. Our current council at times, that seems to be not well-informed. You appear at times to have become a rubber-stamp council, just approving whatever that is brought to your desk. In the recent past, I was quoted in a guest column in the Fort Morgan Times with statements that I never made in my editorial, and I have proof. I deserve an apology, however, I doubt that I will receive one. I'll conclude saying that this is the first time that I can recall in our community an appointed official using his position to demean our citizens with ugly comments, misquoting, and name-calling, like factions, crazies, a bunch of old retired people. You won't ever gain the community's trust and respect by doing such things. Einstein's quote, "Unthinking respect for authority is the greatest enemy of truth." Think about that. Let me read that again. Unthinking respect for authority is the greatest enemy of truth. Now, once again, with a full council seated, you councilmen have the opportunity to readdress some very hard and uncomfortable decisions in order to move Fort Morgan forward. Mr. Wells, yesterday you left a message on my answering machine saying that you heard I had concerns about the city. I have a non-published number that does not show up on caller ID. I did verify that today with my phone provider. How did you get my number? When I bring my concerns to the councilman or to the mayor, that is between myself and them. I do not answer to you. So, how did you get my number? Thank you for your time.
Do you, do you want to respond? On how I got the number? If, if you care, if you don't care, that's all right, because I work for you. But if any of you are concerned, I'd be happy to let you know.
Oh, she asked.
So, this is not the first time that Ms. Graham has had concerns with the city, and we have called her back on other issues that have happened in the cemetery and other places, and we have her number on file, so that we can reach out and contact her in the event that things happen. So, based upon past contacts with you, we have that information, so that we can get in touch with you. And yes, I learned about your concerns and some of your concerns about maybe my beliefs and where I go to church, and wanted to contact you and see what I could do about that.
I do feel that our community has had major road bumps this past year, and it has cost us extravagantly in all areas. Okay, yes, I have asked questions about faith, you betcha I have, but I want to address something. I've lived in Washington, DC for four years. My ex-husband and I and my child were the only white people on our block, so I lived with all faiths. I lived with all colors and cultures around me. I am the least prejudiced person you will find. What you choose as your faith is your business. What I choose as my faith is my business. However, when there appears to be in our small town, how do I want to word this, preferential hiring due to one's faith? I don't really like that, and I'm not the only one that has brought this item before you. I know that, you know that, you've told me that, you've told me that. I do hope that with a full council, that you will start working together as a team, each and every one of you. And I do hope that you will readdress some things. And yes, my number, you're right, but here again, when I speak to my councilmen or any councilman seated here, or the mayor, that is between me and them. That should be in confidence, that should be retained in confidence, and like, again, I said, sir, I do not. I said, sir, I do not answer to you. And please don't call my home number again.
And if you have any concerns, feel free to call me.
I will not call you.
Thank you.
I will call my councilmen that represent my ward or possibly the mayor. But there again, I'm asking you publicly, do not call my home phone number.
Okay, I'll respect that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I got one. I'm a little taken aback by the assertion that, speaking about myself with the reference to council members, that I am influenced or rubber stamping or anything else like that. You know, first of all, the only reason that anybody'd have any coercion ability over me and everything would be they could take my $100 a month job away. But for 30 years, I take the facts and I weigh them, and most of the time, my decision is a life and death decision, or a lot of times it is, and people listen to me. I do the same thing when I'm applying to this job. And I also do this job and took this job because I got a lot of experience, because I've been talking to people for 30 years from every walk of life. So that assertion and everything is baloney.
Is there any other public comments? Susanna?
I think I'll take one. So I'm very proud to stand in front of council to kind of just say what I'm proud of on behalf of council. Me coming as a newcomer to this community, my father being kind of first generation outside of being like native-born, so he was born in like native Lansing territory, but myself being born in Fort Morgan, really being abrasive of council and embracing that, embracing of the business nature. Yeah, so you have my support in that regard. Yeah, so I just want to make that public with me being with One Morgan County, which is a community-building organization, really like enhancing the newcomer community. And I've had the honor of working with a lot of you, Ron, Doug, Ally, yeah. So I know you all have my support in terms of building a more cohesive community. David, I've had the honor of working with you with the Growing Readers Program.
It's a great program.
Yes. And really what we're achieving with that is that every four-year-old in town has 100 books in their household, again, four-year-olds.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Your appreciation is, it's repetitive, but your appreciation is appreciated. I figure that we are appreciated for the job that we do.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And again, I have the privilege of working with like David, Ron, Jeffrey, and all of you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Reports by officials and staff.
So one thing that I wanted to bring up is that we've been working for quite some time, it's been put off here and there with self-collect taxes, and we, basically, David, for your benefit, self-collect, right now, when people pay sales tax, businesses collect it and then they remit it to the state and then the state gives us. We've been looking at self-collect for the last several years and we've had an employee work really hard on it. We had the Wayfair, Way, Wayfair case that came out, trying to figure out how are we going to make that work? And I think we're getting to a point where we're getting really close to rolling that out. We just want to make the businesses and everybody aware and the council that we're going to be working on that. You can change two times during the year and you have to give 45 days' notice to that change, that's on July 1st or January 1st. We're trying to shoot for the July 1st, which means we'd have to give notice and make some decisions on council in the next few weeks. This is a major change, I think, in how we do things in the city as far as collecting tax, but when we looked at the benefits to it as it relates to businesses, as it relates to cities' revenues, it makes a lot more sense to self-collect. So we've got Jeff Wilson working on some of the issues to make sure we're addressing all the legal issues. We'll be bringing back an ordinance for council's consideration and we'll hopefully be rolling that out for July 1st. If for whatever reason we can't get it done on July 1st, then the rollout will be January 1st, but our goal right now is to work it through so we can start January 1st. So that's coming up and wanted to make that, point that out. Want to thank all of the people at, in the streets departments who are doing extra duty cleaning up the piles of trash around the community. It is still, we're winding up spring cleanup, but want to thank them because they definitely do help in making our community a cleaner place. I also want to remind people that don't dump things in the alleys. During spring cleanup, we can clean it up for you, but don't dump things in the alleys. It's an area that we're addressing with various initiatives and in order to keep our community clean, we shouldn't be throwing things that, out in the alleys that don't fit in the dumpsters. We'll pick it all up, try and get it to fit in the dumpsters. A lot of really exciting things going on right now, a lot of bids have gone through, a lot of contracts. I know the mayor had a big stack of contracts to sign tonight. That means a lot of work is moving forward in the city. If you drive by Center Point, you'll see that they're getting ready to put the roads in. We've done some waterline work for some of the properties we believe are going to develop first, and we anticipate that this will be built, or the roads will be built. And, you know, with Sarah on board, we've got a lot of irons in the fire that we're trying to bring in, some multifamily housing in that area, working with FM Cup and their efforts to get a study to help us further attract businesses. And it's amazing, the economic development opportunities that just pop up out of nowhere. I happened to go on a quick trip with my daughter and was the last flight to get out of DIA, I think, before the storm, and sat next to a representative of a major home-building company that we're trying to get some more information and work with them on what we can do to get homes built here. So we're always trying to sell the city wherever we go and, you know, I think that some of the things we have going on in Fort Morgan are amazing and we have some really cool things that I think we'll be talking about tonight and have talked about tonight when we're moving forward. The other thing I wanted to point out, if you didn't see in the newspaper, we received the award, the annual award for project, best project of the year for the Nebraska Municipal Power Pool, and we were able to receive that award last week. I know that we also received several more awards in our electric department and other departments, not just for projects, but for safety issues. Again, safety is a mantra that we have here at the city of Fort Morgan and we do it very well and want to thank our employees for being safe. Again, we netted back somewhere around, between our general liability insurance and workers' comp insurance, somewhere around $67,000 in paybacks because of our safety. And that says a lot about our employees and what they're doing to make sure that they're safe for themselves and for their families. With that, I know there are a few other comments that people want to make and then after that, if you have any concerns that you want to raise, we're here to answer questions or resolve concerns, yes.
As I'm sure you're aware, Saturday, we had a very dangerous, volatile incident in the community. Required the resources of the police department, along with the Morgan County Sheriff's Office and the Brush Police Department. Very successful outcome. That was as a result of several years of planning and resource allocation and training. I just wanted to make you aware of how well that worked out with the other agencies and the cooperation. It was a very good event as far as law enforcement's concerned and we were able to pull that off without any injuries or property damage.
Any questions from council? Oh, is there anybody in the back? Hi, anybody? Nope. All right. Anything we can answer or help the council with? All right, thank you.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's just a couple of bids out right now. City's accepting sealed bids for 16-inch water main replacement parts until 2:45 PM on April 8th and for the reconstruction of the aircraft parking apron at the Fort Morgan Airport until 3:00 PM on April 22nd. Under meetings, the airport advisory board is scheduled to meet on April 10th at noon at the airport. The library advisory board is scheduled to meet on April 15th at 4:30 PM and the next city council regular meeting will be April 16th here at City Hall at 6:00 PM.
Next item on the agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may not be subject, may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Contributions to the senior center. I would entertain a motion to retire to executive session.
So moved.
A motion by Kevin Lindell and a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Second, or same opposed? Motion carries. We will go into executive session, first of two.